I think today first would really like to welcome the Planning Director here. I think this is her first meeting. And I'm not sure who's going to read the preamble, but I'm going to ask her maybe just to say a welcome, and then we'll read the preamble and take the roll. Good Joyce, are you here?
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning, all. It's my first Planning Commission, and I'm happy to join officially as Director. This has been my first week in the office, and it's been nothing but excitement and flurry of activity. So, thank you, I'm so excited and honored to be in this position of service. I will actually be the one to read the preamble, so I'll just go ahead and do that without further ado. In compliance with notification requirements of Ohio's Open Meeting Law and Section 101.021 of the Codified Ordinances of Cleveland, Ohio, 1976, notice of this meeting has been publicly posted. All Boards and Commissions under the purview of the City Planning Department conducts its meetings according to Robert's Rules of Order. Actions during the meeting will be taken by voice vote. Abstentions from any vote due to a conflict of interest should be stated for the record prior to the taking of any vote. In order to ensure that everyone participating in the meeting has the opportunity to be heard, we ask that you use the Raise Hand feature before asking a question or making a comment. The Raise Hand feature can be found in the Participants Panel on the desktop and mobile version and activated by clicking on the hand icon. You'll see it noted below. Please wait for the Chair or facilitator to recognize you and be sure to select unmute and announce yourself before you speak. When you finish speaking, please lower your hand by clicking on the Raise Hand icon again and mute your microphone. We will also be utilizing the chat feature to communicate with participants. The chat feature can be activated by clicking the chat button located on the bottom of the WebEx screen. Call-in users can unmute by using six. All meeting activity is being recorded via the WebEx platform. These proceedings are also being livestreamed via YouTube. All requests to speak on a particular matter via our website and email have been considered. We have also received emails from those who have provided written comments on a particular matter.
All right, Michael, can you call the roll?
Downing.
Present.
Booker.
I saw August there, so I see him. August?
I'm present, sorry.
Curry.
Present.
McCray Scott.
Present.
Paul.
Present.
Life.
Present.
Madam Chair, we have a quorum.
Thank you. I think the first matter is a zoning amendment, and we are also going to follow rules here for zoning matters, which we'll hear from staff first, and then we'll take some testimony from those in favor and those opposed to this variance or this map change, and then we will deliberate and vote. So first, I'm going to ask for, I think, Shannon to please describe this, and we'll go from there.
Madam Chair.
Yes, I should, yes, go ahead, August.
Madam Chair, I must recuse myself.
Okay. And I would also like to point out that I live in proximity to this zoning change. I do not live contiguous to it. So I just wanted to disclose that. I don't have anything to benefit from this, but I am in proximity to this and live in Little Italy. So I just wanted to really raise that for the Commission, but I believe after checking yesterday that I do not have a conflict. So, thank you, and turn it over to Shannon.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Shannon Leonard, Chief City Planner, City Planning Commission. So this, on your screen here, you can see the Innovation Center of the company Nottingham Spurk. They are a product innovator, this is their innovation office, and I believe they are here to discuss this in a little bit more detail. Directly across overlook is the former assisted living McGregor Development Building, and it is now vacant, and they are in a purchase agreement. This area, next slide, please. Okay, well, we'll just go through this real quick. So basically, the purpose of this rezoning is to allow them to purchase this building to continue to expand their operations, their innovation, and their office space into the assisted living facility. This will align existing and future lands uses with the zoning to enhance the character of the neighborhood, and it'll bring a split jurisdiction parcels into zoning alignment. Next slide, please. This is the proposal here. We're proposing the Nottingham Spurk building. It's already currently zoned Resident Industry A1. Recently, they have bought some property to the northeast as well as to the southwest and consolidated those lots and caused themselves a split zoning issue. And then across overlook, you'll notice that the former McGregor Building is zoned One Family Residential. And so I'll just walk you through each of these sections so that you kind of get an idea of the rezoning altogether. Next slide, please. And so this first section here that's in brown and their McGregor Building is currently zoned One Family A1. And so the proposal here is to change the McGregor Building to Residence Industry to match the building across the street and to the north and south. It's currently zoned One Family, but those are multi-family buildings on those lots. And they also split jurisdiction with Cleveland Heights. Across the border, it's also zoned multi-family. So next slide, please. And here is a slide that's showing you the, across the border, that area is already zoned multi-family. Next slide, please. And so that's the main changes here, is really just proposing Residence Industry on Nottingham Spurk's actual property. So to the north, south of Edge Hill, that was a townhouse district, but they bought that property. And then southeast, southwest, that little square that you see near the bottom, that was Case Western property that they purchased. When they consolidated that lot, they caused themselves a split zoning issue. So if we don't change it all to Residence Industry C1, that takes them out of compliance with their use. And so we're just proposing the same across the street for the McGregor Building so they can expand their operations. And then to the north and south of that property, just turning it to multi-family to match the current land use as well as to match Cleveland Heights' current zoning. Any questions?
No, thank you, Shannon. And could the, I think you said the applicants are here, you can leave up the map, speak on this matter.
That's correct, I believe. Lillian is here from Nottingham Spurk and potentially Mr. Spurk.
Okay.
Yes, that's correct. First, good morning, thank you very much. We have John Spurk here, he's the co-founder of Nottingham Spurk. And Lillian Sendrick here, I am the COO and CFO at Nottingham Spurk. So we are, and we also have with us Anton, who is the current owner of the property that we are looking to purchase. And so what we are looking to do is that our operations, the demand for our services are increasing. So we have been here for 50 years as part of City of Cleveland doing business, and you know, we've been a successful business, and we have opportunity here to expand our, we need capacity because we are increasing our, we need, we are in need to increase our resources, and we need to hire. You want to?
Yeah, it's, and I just want to, on behalf of all the associates at Nottingham Spurk, we're grateful to have your interest and help in working with us to get this to a place where we can use it appropriately as we use our current facility. It was pointed out a few minutes ago. We, as Lillian has just mentioned, we have been, we're both graduates of the Industrial Design Program of the Cleveland State of Art, my partner and that's what we met, and started the business right out of college. The building that we started, it's a garage, it's still in place on the campus. And then the building we spent many years in is also the Case West Reserve Alumni House now. And Case has totally renovated it, and it's an absolutely beautiful structure. And we're thrilled to know it's still in good hands. And we were fortunate to be made aware of this building that we're currently in, a former Christian Science Church that was built in 1930, and we've totally renovated this building as well. And we have incredibly talented people here, designers, engineers, prototypers, machinists that build things. We actually make things here. I mean, developing, and we don't manufacture, but we do all the prototyping, the engineering, and get it ready for production to be produced in factories around the country for our many clients. And that interest, as Lillian has mentioned, has been increasing. You know, we like to think we do great work, and people recognize that, and we attract more companies to work with us. And the companies that we have worked with for decades, companies like Procter &amp; Gamble and Unilever and so on, want to do more things with us. And so because of that, we're looking at hiring additional associates here, primarily in the engineering side, mechanical engineering, electrical engineering, and even biomedical engineering, because we're also getting into more medical device design and engineering. So that's why our current facility is really matched out. It's a beautiful building, as you know, you can probably see from photographs, and we obviously welcome anyone who's interested in getting a firsthand look, because it really is a beautiful facility. That's the good news. It's not laid out in a very great way to maximize the square footage. All the, all the things that make it interesting also make it difficult from a square footage point of view to use. And so we kind of balance that all the time when we're looking to, you know, add a new person or associate to our facility and how to fit them into this space. Because it does make it a little bit of a challenge. It's not, as you probably would think of as, you know, normal office space. You know, it's just a big square or rectilinear space that you then divide up. It's very different here. We have to be very creative, and we're glad to be able to do that. But we have to be very creative with the use of our space. And when we found that the space across the street was available, that, you know, that was very much of an interest to us because of the proximity. You don't often have a chance to see something literally right across the street that's available. And Anne, who's on the call, that is the, I believe, the CEO and President of McGregor, has been incredibly helpful and supportive in our mission to try to make this happen. The thing that is kind of right in the middle of us, this discussion, is the zoning issues. We have to have the zoning that we have for this property in order to carry out the kind of work we do and hope to do across the street at the McGregor facility. So without any other things, Lillian?
So our plans for the property across the street is for office space and conference rooms, and we are looking to, we're not looking to add to the footprint. It's for cosmetic internal to, that's, to be able to use that space for our purpose.
Yeah. Interestingly enough, we have almost no conference rooms available. It's just, you know, we didn't think that we needed a lot of conference rooms 20 years ago when we kind of, almost 20, when we moved into this building. But they're becoming more and more, especially, you know, the kind of meetings we're having at this very moment. We're having more and more of those. And so you need dedicated rooms to be able to have the equipment and the, you know, the ability to do calls like this, soon calls, meeting calls like this. And so we need dedicated rooms to do that. And we literally, our conference rooms, we only have probably four in this building, are constantly booked, day after day. You know, people are having, making calls in their car, and I, and that's no joke. They're literally going into their car with their phone, doing conference calls. It's just, it's just not a good way to do business. So this, this will help a lot.
Okay. Thank you very, very much. And I now, I'm going to read this, because since this is a public hearing, we will take public comment. And we'll now take testimony first from those proponents, those in the audience who are in favor of the zoning change, and then we'll take any testimony if anyone is opposed to the zoning change. And to ask that before anybody make their comment, please raise your hand, use the Raise Hand feature. Maurice will call on you, and we'll ask that you simply state your name and address if you are an affected nearby property owner. And please keep your comments to three minutes or less, so we can hear from everyone and move this forward. Also, please address your comments to the Chair, and we will go from there. So first, anybody who's in favor of the zoning change that would like to speak, besides the applicants themselves? Maurice, do you see anybody?
Madam Chair, no, I don't see anybody at this point.
Okay, do we see anybody? Is there anybody who'd like to speak in opposition to this zoning change?
Again, Madam Chair, nobody with their hand raised?
Okay, so with that, and I don't think I see the councilman on, so I'm going to close the public portion of this meeting, since there is no public comment, and ask that the Commission members ask any questions or deliberate on this matter.
Madam Chair, I move approval. What an interesting story, and I wish them the best for future success. So I move approval.
A second. We have a motion and a second. If there's any other discussion. I would say, as a non-conflicted neighbor, I think this has been incredible, you know, also, and very important historic revaluation that you saved this incredible structure that is a beacon for the city and the region, and I think speaks to the innovation that's going on with your company. So, so happy that you are choosing to expand here in the City of Cleveland. So important for our, not just local economy and hiring, but also how we're seen nationally as a center for innovation, and you guys lead the way. So I want to thank you for that, and we'll call the roll.
Downing.
Yes.
Curry.
Yes.
McCray Scott.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Life.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you very, very much for your investment in the City of Cleveland, and we look forward to seeing the project commence.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Okay. All right, the next matter is also a zoning map amendment. It's to change the height of parcel of land west of Quigley Road between Tyken Street, this Tremont Park Road, and Clark Avenue. I hope I said that correctly. Once again, we'll start with the staff and then any applicants.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Shannon Leonard, City Planning. So this is the day of map amendments with expansions. And so this picture that you're looking at is the Air Products Facility off Quigley Road near the city's vehicle impound. Next slide. And so the proposal here is simply to change the height district, and that's because Air Products would like to expand and upgrade their business to build a new cold storage tower without acquiring any additional land. Earlier this, well, I guess not this year, but late last year, they were in talks with the city, I think, to buy city property to expand. But they ultimately decided that they, they didn't need to expand in land, they just needed to expand to make the height taller so that they could have a little bit taller tower. Next slide, please. And so we're only going from 115 feet here, what it currently is, to 225 to meet that requirement that they need for their cold storage tower. Next slide, please. And so they're proposing to constrict this new efficient cold storage box to fulfill a contract that they have with Cleveland Cliffs, and then they're having additional investment to support the growth in their merchant business. And so this will allow them to meet the demand for oxygen and nitrogen to serve hospitals and healthcare facilities in the region. And then it'll have a 40% increase in full-time employment, so adding truck drivers, technicians, management, and administrative support. And so here's just kind of the blueprint of where that tower is going, and they provided this elevation drawing so that you can see the height here. Next slide, please. And so that's it, we're really just changing, the zoning itself isn't changing. It's staying unrestricted industry, and on their property, we're just moving the height from three to five. And so that's 115 to 225 feet. And I believe their attorney, Mr. Listati, is here to answer any business questions or anything of that sort that you may have.
Okay. Okay, so with the applicant, would the applicant like to say anything?
If you happen to be on the phone, you'd need to hit star and six in order to unmute yourself. I do see that we have one call-in user.
Okay. I think that's okay, even if they are not on. This is also still a public hearing, a zoning matter, so we are going to take public comment. And as we did in the previous case, we'll start with proponents, so those in favor of the zoning change, and then any opposed. So if you're a proponent and you'd like to speak, please use the Raise Hand feature and state your name and address. Anybody in favor of the zoning change?
Madam Chair, we have no hands raised. Shannon just pointed out that Mr., he's logged on as Ezio is the person. I just had a request to unmute, I don't know if, he might be having some technical issues there, but.
Oh, there we go, I see. Mr. Ezio, would you like to speak as the applicant?
Or maybe he's not hearing us.
Yeah, no, he unmuted, or you unmuted, that's okay. Since there's no one speaking as applicant for this matter, is there anyone opposed to this zoning change that would like to speak?
And again, Madam Chair, I have no hands raised.
Okay, okay. I'd like to also point out that Stemi noted, and that she will be abstaining from this matter and not voting, so, because of some of her work. So please note that for this project, and we'll take any discussion and call the roll.
Madam Chair, I move approval. Downing.
We have a motion, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Okay, I'll call the roll.
Downing.
Yes.
Booker.
Yes.
Curry.
Yes.
McCray Scott.
Yes.
Life. Councilman, are you there?
Yeah, I've said yes, I don't know if it didn't pick up.
Not the first time, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, councilman. Okay, motion carries. So we have a lot split and consolidation. Thank you, Shannon, by the way, for those presentations. This is permanent parcel number 007-02-039, this Orchard Ave and West 43 Place. The presenter is Larry Apple, the property owner.
Yes, thank you. I am the Principal of Elmhurst Homes. This is a property that I am buying from the Cuyahoga County Land Bank, actually title transferred this Tuesday on the 15th. It is a very long and narrow piece, 176 feet by 30 feet. The proposal is to split the property into two and to build two houses. These two new lots will conform better to the lots in the area. The preliminary design of the plan was reviewed and approved by the Housing Design Review Committee on January 25th, and we therefore respectfully request approval of this lot split.
Okay. Just to clarify, on the map below, can you, can you discuss? It's just hard for us to see, or can, I don't know if there's a close-up. Was this one large parcel?
Yes.
It's hard for us to see where, or is this the linear parcel that is actually, you're cutting in half?
Yes, it was a long parcel on West 43rd Street, which was 176 feet long. And what you see now on West 43rd in the corner of Orchard are two houses. There's one on the courts, corner of Orchard and West 43rd, and one behind that on Peach Court and West 43rd.
Okay, I see. The only question that I have is, could you describe the decision? And I'm going to ask staff if they've reviewed this. The decision to have a garage on the corner of Peach Court? And is it a small kind of alley as opposed to having two houses front the corners?
Yes, I think if you look, it doesn't show, but Peach Court has several garages on Peach Court, and this would conform with the other uses on the court. This aerial may show that better.
Yeah, Ms. Curry, this is Paul Begon, I'm the architect with Mr. Apple. Yeah, Peach Court is a very small little alley in the city of Cleveland. I'm sure where, and there's some of the pictures there, you can kind of see. This is actually West 43rd, which is a larger alley than Peach Court. So Peach Court is down at the bottom of that picture right there, of which, yes, all of the other uses on that are garages.
Okay, okay. Any other questions from Commission members for discussion?
I move approval. Downing.
A second, Stemi, Paul. Oh, we have a motion and a second, any other discussion? Okay. Michael, can you call the roll?
Downing.
Yes.
Fluker.
Yes.
Curry.
Yes.
McCray Scott.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Life.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. We've administered.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Administrative approvals. The first one is ordinance 137-2022, authorizing the Director of Public Works to enter into a lease located in City Hall to Cleveland Neighborhood Progress for the purpose of conducting Huntington Bank's Entrepreneur and Residence Program. Who's here to speak to this?
Madam Chair, these are administrative approvals, so we did not line up any presenters for these. They've already been signed by.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I must recuse myself from that agenda.
The first one. Okay, okay. So then I think, can you just scroll through these slowly so we can just take a quick look at them?
I move approval.
Yep, motion, so we have a second for the administrative approvals?
A second, Paul.
Motion and a second. Okay. Michael, can you take the roll?
Downing.
Yes.
Curry.
Yes.
McCray Scott.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Life.
Motion carries. Thank you, sorry, motion carries. So now we're going into the design review matters. First one is Near West Design Review. This is the Harbor Row Townhomes New Construction. We gave schematic approval to this project November 19th, 2021. So this is here seeking final approval. This is at 2035 West 44th Street. Whoever's here to speak to this, we have Antonia or anyone else, I'll need to swear you in. So if you could please identify yourselves.
Hi, this is Antonia Maranucci, I'm the architect on the project.
Okay, and are you the only one here to speak to this matter?
Um, I believe so.
Okay. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth as usual answer to the penalty of perjury?
Yes.
Okay, please go ahead and present.
Um, okay, thank you, good morning. Good morning to the committee. We, to clarify, we did get schematic approval back in November. I wanted to be clear that we are seeking final approval just for the townhome portion of this project. The apartments still need a little bit more development. So we are just looking at the Harbor Row portion of the project. Next slide, please. So here is looking at the site a little more broadly. I apologize for any noises. I just had a baby, so my newborn is maybe a little squawky. Thank you. So we are in Ohio City at Lorraine and West Forty-Fourth Street. The green lot that you see was the developer's first phase of this project, conception of this project. I was not involved with this one, but it's a commercial building, two stories at the corner of Lorraine Forty-Fourth. And what we're proposing is involving the two lots immediately south along Forty-Fourth. Next slide. And then again, just zooming in a little closer, the northern lot of the two red ones is where the flats, the apartment project that we are not seeking final approval of today will be. And then the one that's between Apple and Orchard is where the Harbor Row Townhome Development, which we are seeking final approval for today, is located. Yep, just to give clarity on the whole development. Next slide. So existing condition photos. And this is the recently completed commercial building at the corner of Forty-Fourth and Lorraine. Sharon Williams is the anchor tenant there. Next slide. Context of the existing blocks. As they are right now, they're both vacant. This is the northern of the two blocks between Lorraine Court and Apple. Next slide. And then the block that will have the the townhome portion of the project, which is between Apple and Orchard along Forty-Fourth. Next slide. So context of West Forty-Fourth Street, it's pretty typical Ohio City context with single and multifamily historic homes. Next slide. And then as we move a little bit more eastern into the site, this is more context to show again the same kind of fabric, a little bit tighter as we move into the neighborhood off of the Forty-Fourth corridor. Next slide. So this is a overall site plan of the row Harbor Row portion. It features seven townhomes that front West Forty-Fourth Street. Some are two, two-car garage, twenty-two-foot wide units, five of those. And then there are two sixteen-foot wide, one-car units that face that face West Forty-Fourth. And then there's a common private driveway that will run mid-block. And then the backside of the block facing West Forty-Third Place will feature four Mew-style townhomes that are offering different sizes between seven hundred and twenty square foot one-bedroom to two-bedroom, just over a thousand square foot. And the goal of the project is to provide different sized units that will be a different size or a different price entry points to provide an array of entry points for homeownership in the neighborhood. So this is just a like line work view, looking at those townhomes that front West Forty-Fourth. You can see the east elevation will be what's facing the drive court and then the elevation as we turn the corners on the north and the south. We're taking what I'm calling like a modern Federalist approach to the architecture of this location. Next slide. And then a quick look at the floor plans, just for reference if need be. Next slide. So here's a colored rendering showing the design intent. And I have zoomed in renderings that will look a little bit more close at the materiality. If you want to continue, that's the full seven-unit picture. So our max height is at thirty-six feet, ten inches. The top of that parapet piece, they're proposing standing seam aluminum roofing on the seven units facing Forty-Fourth in a black aluminum. We are proposing vinyl windows. Basis of design is gel one simulated divided light windows. And then we are proposing eight-inch smooth hardy board siding throughout the project at the areas that are not brick. And then the brick we're proposing, which you'll see a little bit better in the next slide, is the Glengarry. Oh, I guess it's two sides up. It's a Glengarry carbon black. And on the backside, same strategy mostly with with the materiality, with a steel flush garage door. Next slide. And then here's a look at that, how that brick parapet kind of turns the corner. We wanted to give a little like peek through at the front steps to help engage as these engage residents as the units do turn that corner and not make it like a unfriendly wall. And that will feature an aluminum black handrail. Next slide. And then this is a look at the material board. The carbon black brick has kind of like a most a purplish metallic type of hue to it to give it a little bit more dimension, keep it from being too flat. Clearly, we're taking a monochromatic approach to this. So we wanted to make sure that it had elements of dimension. We're also proposing warmer elements through the entry doors and some of the light fixtures that you can see here to also add that dimension and warmth to it. And we're also proposing, I think I've hit everything here, the unilock pavers, which you'll see a little bit further down in the presentation in terms of our paving plans. We're planning to utilize concrete and and these unilock pavers to distinguish pedestrian zones versus vehicle. Next slide. And this is a pretty repetitive same thing, just showing the backside of those units with a different light fixture in the garage door. Next slide. And this is looking at those Mew townhomes that north elevation. One unit faces faces Apple while the other three units face West Forty-Third. And you can sort of see how they increase in gradation as you move a little further down the south side of the site. Next slide. And floor plans, just for reference as well. You can see we sort of, an update that we made from last presentation was we manipulated these placement of these units a bit more so that we could ensure we were accommodating like proper rear landings at those rear entrances where the units all have surface parking spaces as well as spaces for the air conditioning units and queuing for trash and recycling so that each of these units has a little bit more breathing room for functionality. Because they are obviously pretty efficiently laid out, tight, tight parcels, but allows us to maintain a few simple parcel layout. Next slide. And here they are in color. And in proportion to the existing context, you can see we really aimed to make a gradation of scale from West Forty-Fourth as we moved further east into the neighborhood, as well as moving north to south from that retail unit to apartments to townhomes and then onward into single-family and two-family units that are just already existing. So you can see how everything sort of plays together. There are two attached historic row homes that you can see on that lower rendering facing Orchard that I think we think play really nicely into the overall aesthetic and scheme here. Next slide. And this is all looking at it from the south facade in context, looking north from Orchard. Those two attached units are the ones ghosted in white behind the sycamore tree. And I just wanted to be clear how the the context worked. And then looking closely at the materiality of the Mews. Again, we're going to go with an eight-inch smooth hardy board, a dimensional shingle roofing for these units. We wanted this to have a really, we're really inspired by English Mew homes and wanted to create like a bricked terrace as the exterior space for each of these units. And that repeats the same brick at the foundation line and to create those terraces, unifying the whole project. Taking a little bit more of a playful approach with the color scheme here to again meld into the existing context of the neighborhood, while also respecting the, you know, history of of the neighborhood. Next slide. Well, this is looking at the backside to show how the materials work on on the alley side of or the driveway side of the building to give a little bit of scale and context there. Next slide. And again, looking at those materials, it's again pretty repetitive. The colors are from the Sharon Williams Historic Palette. We wanted things to be similar, yet a little bit different for the front townhomes versus the rear Mews. Next slide. And then moving into the lighting legend, it's really just two different lanterns that we're proposing. One kind of the entry, that burnished bronze one, and then one that's a little bit more as a utilitarian kind of light. That's not, that's the second one, the satin black one that will be at like the pedestrian walkways, as well as the backside of the garages. And then, of course, a few just floodlights for safety and security. And then there are two, three existing city street lamps on the site. For planting legend, we're going to go with, we're proposing field maple and trident maples along the streets as city street trees. And then for the planting boxes that we've created along the townhomes and on the northernmost Mew, just a pretty simple mix of barberry, boxwood, and sage. Next slide. And for the paving legend, this is looking again at the difference, the proposed areas for the unilock versus the concrete. That was one of our conditions for schematic approval was examining a little bit more detail on the private drive. So we thought not only from a stormwater management perspective, but from a pedestrian scale, an aesthetic perspective, if we used the unilock pavers kind of in those pedestrian more, more private or among like on your property type of spaces, that would help break up the concrete as well as distinguish those spaces and then using concrete for the public sidewalks and aprons and that private drive surface to, for mostly for functionality and in accordance with the city's requirements. I think, next slide. Oh, we also wanted to be, present what our plans were for the likes lot I would say reconfiguration for each of the two lots, both for Harbor Row and for the Harbor Flats Apartments. So right here, you can see, if you can go back one more, the existing parcel line with the the proposed plans ghosted behind it. But you can see the breakdown of the existing and then the proposed, next slide, would be a common element block at that shared private drive and then few simple townhome, like a few simple parcel layout for each townhome, creating eleven sublots. And next slide. And then the northern lot, which has the flats, again, has its five existing parcels currently undeveloped. They're empty. And then the proposed would be a parcel A with the building structure itself and parcel B, which would be a separate parcel for the parking spaces. And the parking spaces, the parking here, I believe Matt Moss might have to help me out with this because I wasn't involved in this part of the project. But there's parking requirements for the land bank acquiring as well as to support the retail building that's already constructed.
Okay. Thank you. Commission members, this is for final approval.
Madam Chair, we have Councilman Slife with his hand raised.
Yes, but before I ask or make any comments, I see that the design review gave schematic approval with conditions. Could the neighborhood planner just give us an update on that meeting and those conditions?
Certainly, Madam Chair and Commission Member Slife. At our last design review meeting, we did not have a quorum, so the design review committee could not make a motion. We did have members present and we did discuss this project. And overall, the committee members that were present were pleased with the design and the overall outcome. I believe the condition relates to the drive and the how the auto court functions in this project. And I think the applicant has has met the expectations of making this a safe space for vehicles and for pedestrians, especially as it relates to the Mews units that are fronting the alley and the auto court. So overall, they were, the the tone and nature of the discussion was satisfactory.
Thank you. And with that, I will just, two comments, ones to the project, but one more generally to our new director. You know, on the Mews townhome, since they are offset, if there's any possibility, and I know this is late in the game, but if the window is on the side, I know when it comes to townhomes, there's not as many opportunities for natural light. But that seems like if they're stacked, maybe that's an opportunity to create some side windows that are north-facing that would get some sunlight in during the summer could be appreciated by the residents. So that's just a just a comment for Antonia. It's a great project. And then, Director, I had made this, I made this comment a couple times for just generally for projects and suggestion. So I'm going to phrase it again in a new administration. We often see with projects and the landscaping plans, plans for trees within the right-of-way. And I think it's really important for there to be a special presentation by the city's urban forester so that we can get a sense of what their requirements are for street plantings, if they approve of what's being proposed, whether it's the species or if there's overhead wires. There's a lot that goes into trees and the planting of trees in the city. And I, as much as I love this picture and I like what we're looking at, I think it's important that the commission members have a sense of what's actionable and what isn't. And hopefully, these aren't just purely aspirational. They're also able to be implemented in the end. So so but that's a big topic that we might just need to have a day where that is a presentation from Jennifer Kipman Public Works. So thank you.
Madam Chair and Commission Member Slife, I've noted that and we'll loop back. Thanks.
Any other comments or motion?
I move approval. Downing.
A second. Paul.
Motion and a second. Any other discussion? I would like to actually just commend you for the kind of level of detail and the thoughtfulness. And then you've been back before, but it, you know, I believe this is a nice project and look forward to seeing the also the sort of apartment building come back as well. So thank you. Can we call the roll?
Downing.
Yes.
Flucker.
Yes.
Curry.
Yes.
McCray Scott.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Life.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you very much and good luck to the construction. This is a near west design review case, Abbey Road Apartments, seeking final approval, nineteen ten Abbey Road. Brandon, are you here? Anyone else speaking to this matter?
Yes, myself and Michael Panzicca should be on the calls as well.
Yes, I'm here.
Okay.
Madam Chair, before we begin, I actually do want to make a note on the the motion from prior, so if you could go back up to the slide, Michael. The, there is an amendment. It should have read schematic design approval to this project on January twenty-first, two thousand twenty-two with the following preference, that the applicant direct all vehicular egress from the site onto West Twentieth Street as a right-only exit. So this would not be both directions. It would not have a left turn. It would be a right only. And that that was further clarification.
Okay.
And we. Madam Chair, if I'm in Director, if I may. So going on to Smith Court would still be part of what they were proposing. This is just an additional egress, right turn only onto West Twenty-Fifth Street.
Okay.
That was actually stated at the meeting, just not in so many words by the commission members. And that's why I didn't quite get it right.
Okay. Well, we'll also, maybe someone can point this out as we go through the presentation. Before we jump in, I need to swear you both in. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth as usual answer to the penalty of perjury?
Yes.
Okay, so take it away. And obviously, please also really focus on the major issues, especially between the last meeting and the design review comments as well.
Yeah, absolutely. And jumping right in, the exterior design of the building hasn't changed much at all since you guys last seen it. Emphasis and discussion has been obviously. I'll highlight that as we go through, but I do want to state ahead of the. Um, I'll highlight that as we go through, but I do want to, uh, state ahead of the presentation that, uh, we are extremely appreciative of the process. Um, we've had some very good dialogue with residents, city complement, uh, and others, uh, through this process, which I think shaped this project to be, uh, much more successful. So, uh, including comments from designer view, city planning, uh, and the planning commission. So, um, we want to thank everyone on that process. Site is Abbey Avenue. Uh, it's between West 20th and West 19th. Um, obviously, there's a lot of development going in the area and the close proximity to Abbey Park as well. Uh, next slide. With some orientation of the site, some existing, you know, photos and context, the site is relatively vacant. Uh, it's been used as a construction staging, uh, zone for the Waterford Bluffs project over the year. Um, there's only two structures that remain on site presently with Abbey Market, uh, and, and one house, uh, structure. Um, next slide. And, uh, from a site orientation discussion, uh, there's the West 20th Townhouse Development that's under construction just to the north of us, north of Smith Court. Um, and our project basically accompanies the full city block between West 20th and West 19th. With three buildings, uh, two townhouse buildings, a six unit and a four unit townhouse building, uh, to the north, um, abutting West 20th and Smith and West 19th and Smith. And then a U-shaped, uh, apartment building, uh, C-shaped, uh, the C building, um, along Abbey Avenue, holding the corners of both West 20th and West 19th. Um, as you can see depicted in this, uh, uh, image here on screen, um, the, the ingress to the site would come from the Smith Court, uh, entry, um, to two gates, uh, in the back. Uh, and then we've provisioned, um, for a right turn exit only as a relief valve that you will, um, cite, uh, circulation and, and exit. I do want to state that, uh, we've had a lot of, um, discussion internally, uh, development team, sign team, um, along with obviously city planning, uh, which also included, uh, Tree Mount West, uh, the residents and, um, Councilman McCormick separately, um, and individual situations. And from all those discussions, um, the development team is, uh, it's agreed to pursue, the, uh, exit only, uh, on West 20th, but are basically requesting that that's done in a separate action, um, that would happen during the course of construction. Uh, this was, uh, very consistently stated that's gonna have approval, um, that was received, uh, uh, planning commission. It was also stated at design review, uh, and then it was also stated at, uh, the meeting that we had with Kerry McCormick, McCormick and, uh, Corey Reardon from Tree Mount West. So again, uh, to not delay the course of construction. Um, but the provision is there and that we would be pursuant of this, um, post, uh, permanent approval, but during the, the construction, uh, process. Uh, next slide. So a better detailed version of the site plan, again, 132 unit five-story building, uh, along West 20th, uh, 19th. Uh, we have a 1,800 square foot retail space on the, uh, corner of West 20th. Um, and then also the lobby in the West 19th corner, um, and the, uh, four, uh, curb cut, uh, parking spaces for, uh, two spots dedicated to the retail and two spots for, um, you know, Uber, Lyft, uh, DoorDash and other types of, uh, deliveries, or pickups. Um, next slide. Just, uh, typically in, uh, the floor plan of the building, uh, for floors two through five. Next slide. Typical floor plans of the six unit of, uh, townhouse building. Next slide. Here's a, a dust shot of, um, the Abbey Avenue, uh, building at the corner of West 19th and Abbey with, um, our proposed exterior lighting on. I have a sheet later on that details that lighting. Again, it kind of nice glow and accent some of the architectural features, the columns and pilasters and piers, um, at the building at different levels. And then obviously the lighting on the balconies. This is relatively unchanged from, uh, when you guys last saw this from schematic approval. Next slide. There's a day shot looking at the other corner, uh, which is extremely similar to the same style and layout, uh, 19th during the daytime. Uh, and we have provision to allow for, our escape to allow for a potential patio space if that user would need outdoor dining. Can activate the street as well. Um, next slide. And we'll come back for final signage. Um, the signage that's in this project is just shown for placeholders and earmarks, but not, uh, for reference, but not for approval. View of the townhomes. Next slide. Here's a view back from Abbey Park, um, looking at the corner. Next slide. There's a view on the other side of West 20th, looking at the townhouses with the apartment building in the distance. Next slide. Um, here's a refined exterior material board. Um, materials have been left unchanged. They added, uh, detailing of, um, utilizing a product called EZTRIM for all of transitions of materials, inside and outside corner trims, and then the reveals as well. Um, image to the right of those shades, seen what the reveals will look like in that captured fiber cement panel. Um, and those will be color matched, uh, to the material themselves. So it'll be a tone on tone, uh, for those reveals, uh, um, breakup. So, um, next slide. And some elevations. Next slide, uh, give you context. It's the main elevation of the Abbey Avenue, uh, and West 19th. Perspective of the interior courtyard of the building, uh, and then interior of the two cor- uh, the wings. And then townhomes, I think. Now, uh, landscape plan again, um, right now that tree lawn trees in that, that are, are this thing are all butchered. As a power line and other aspects. So we have a lot of, uh, low growth, low growth, you know, tree lawn trees. You know, give a nice streetscape, uh, and then obviously foundation plantings along the building to accentuate, um, points of entry and for all the walk-up units on the ground floor. Um, next slide. Then exterior lighting, uh, to the building, um, utilizing, um, some uplighting. Uh, one is a little bit smaller concentrated light, uh, if you want, uh, for the, kind of the two-story glow, where the E2 will cast on the whole building of the five-story glow, narrow beam. Um, I, oh, I'm just, so. Happy to answer any questions. But again, as we stated, that we've talked to the development team and development team is, you know, on board with, you know, curb cut. But again, we'd like to emphasize that it would be a separate action during the course of construction. And we're committed to that.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Um, so I'm gonna ask if, um, commission members or, um-
Madam Chair, we have Elaine Baroski.
Okay.
With her hand raised.
Okay.
And Councilman Slife.
Okay. Um, eh, so if it's okay, Councilman, if we could hear from Elaine, uh, from the community or any others, and then I'll come back to you. Is that okay? Okay, okay. Elaine, please go ahead.
Yes, hello, Commission. Um, thank you, Madam Chairman. So I'm Elaine Baroski and I am the Chair of the Block Club for, uh, Duck Island. And so I just want to say, first of all, we want to thank Brandon and Mike, Michael for being as really as responsive and communicative with our block club, um, throughout this process. We think the end result of this, um, is a big, is an improvement, but a huge improvement over what we currently are sitting on the lot. So we do want to thank both of them. He didn't, Brandon did not mention, but there's also been a lot of discussion about the retail space. And being somewhat open, I think we're all kind of talking about, you know, what to do with Abbey Market since it will be a loss to the neighborhood. So we thank them for this. I think our really concern is before this gets final review, we totally understand the developer's perspective of wanting to move forward without the city's decision. But we are very concerned because of history, that when this happens, the city doesn't follow through on what needs to happen and what's agreed upon in terms of traffic studies. So this is trying to be very respectful. Um, but we have been in contact with, uh, Mr. Moss, who has provided us with the plan for how this is going to be decided on whether or not an egress can be added. And it appears to us that the studies that are going to be conducted are more, and I will be honest, I'm, I am a researcher. I can see how a study is designed and the studies appear to be designed to prove that we're wrong, that we need an egress, rather than whether or not the additional egress would in fact be a safety problem. And so we would just ask, like, again, in light of what's happened at the Waterford Bluffs process, which, um, has not, has not been followed through on, we do not, we do not want to slow the process down of this development, but we want a promise from this planning commission and from the city that our opinions are going to be heard. You've taken a lot of our time to give feedback to this. And at the end of the day, the parking was ignored. And now this egress looks like it's, it may be ignored. And I think I would just respectfully ask the commission to please listen to us. We live in this neighborhood. Yes, there may not be a lot of traffic currently, but we can see what's coming. And so we would really appreciate if everybody would at least take our concerns as valid concerns and not just because we don't, we're not against development, we're not against a big density development. But we are concerned about the impact that these huge, huge apartment complexes that are going planned for Duck Island are going to have for our small neighborhood. And so I'll leave it at that, but I really hope that, um, the commission would do more than put a preference. And I would like to hear the city, city's, you know, response to really how this will happen if the approval is for them to go forward. The developer has been phenomenal because they're already building it into the, into the plans. So it's there to happen. But our, our neighborhood wants to know what are the next steps to see that that actually is going to happen. So thank you very much.
Madam Chair, we have quite a few people now with their hands raised. We have Councilman Slife, we have, uh, Commissioner Flucker, and we have, uh, the two gentlemen from the, uh, the, uh, project, Mr. Petroff and Mr. Panzika. I mean, I'm up. We can't hear, we can't, we can't hear you. Did you hear me?
I wasn't, I wasn't sure if that meant I was up.
Elaine.
Uh, Lillian, I think you're, you're muted.
Oh, I apologize. I wasn't muted. I'm sorry. So let's hear from Councilman Slife first, and then we'll go back to the applicant, um, afterwards.
Uh, 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 thank you. And, you know, in speaking with Councilman McCormick, uh, you know, the, the, his big, his big item for me to convey was the importance of this egress out onto West 20th for traffic. And especially because on the other side of the project, there's a park, so we don't need to be funneling cars at, at a park where kids are playing. I guess my question, Madam Chair, is, um, is I guess for staff, um, are we able to acquire that egress in this approval as the planning commission? Or is the issue that we don't have jurisdiction, that's a zoning variance? And I guess, I, I think we're all, we're up the intense certainly here. I appreciate, um, you know, the neighbors concerned that, uh, you know, by punting that, that portion of the approval, uh, to a different day. I, 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 I guess I'm trying to unpack if there's any option but that because of what the planning commission has jurisdiction over versus the zoning variances.
Madam Chair and Councilmember Slife, uh, I would like to, uh, have Matt Moss, the district planner, discuss this a little bit regarding the zoning aspect and the timing and the process, as well as the analysis, if that is okay to share right now.
Yes, that'd be great. Thank you.
Go ahead, Matt.
Thank you, Director and Madam Chair. So I can share some of the history as well as what we've proposed as the way, uh, to evaluate this situation and make an informed recommendation. So the history of the site, briefly, in terms of the zoning code, goes back to rough, to about 2018, when much of the neighborhood was rezoned in anticipation of projects like this. And the reason why we recommended it and, and the commission and council ultimately proved mapping the urban form overlay on West 19th Abbey and West 20th is that the time, we weren't sure whether this block was going to be developed as you see now as a comprehensive site, or if it was going to be developed individually. That plus the presence of Smith Court at the time, an underutilized alley, presented a cohesive opportunity to coordinate traffic flow and minimize conflicts between vehicles and pedestrians. This area has a high degree of walkability. It's also very connected from a transit perspective. And since that zoning was done, we've seen an increase in multimodal improvements, including the tow pass trail connections, the red line greenway, and other projects like intro in the Ohio City neighborhood pop up. So we see this, this area trending towards greater walkability, greater, greater multimodal connectivity. And so to that end, that was the, that was one of several reasons why we had proposed and worked extensively with the community on developing that rezoning proposal. That said, we take this concern very seriously as staff. And as this project has progressed, I have helped coordinate conversations with our traffic engineering department and Commissioner Mavic to understand the situation. I've had many conversations with the developer on how we can coordinate on evaluating the situation. Uh, I have come up with a plan to evaluate this and make an informed decision around, uh, studying the current traffic flow and speed along West 19th, along Abbey and along West 20th. And the developer has agreed to assist us in collecting data on the traffic flow when the project is built along Smith Court. And we also want to analyze the sightlines at Smith Court and West 19th, as well as West 19th and Abbey Avenue. And that's because the, uh, our concern is that the sightlines at this proposed drive location would be less, would be of a lower quality than the sightlines that exist at the existing intersections. And that's a huge part of safety is between, uh, vehi- vehicles and pedestrians, is being able to see clearly traffic, both vehicle traffic and pedestrian traffic in order to make this a safe walking environment and a safe driving environment. We have done traffic counts on West 19th as of, uh, the, as of February 14th. So we did a traffic study and collected some information from February 10th to February 14th. And it showed that the median, the mean speed on this street is 14.3 miles an hour. The posted speed is 25, so it is a slow street. And the average annual, uh, the average daily traffic is 392 cars. And so obviously, we would expect that to increase as a result of this project, because this project is adding 110 parking spaces as a part of the development. And so we want to study the traffic flow, the volume, speed, both before and after, in order to make an informed decision. Because this would require a variance to include this, that would be a separate process that would require a hearing of board of zoning appeals. And the reason why we want to collect this information is because we need to present, for the sake of everyone, the developer, the community, the city, and the Board of Zoning Appeals, what the facts are in order to make an informed decision. Because part of that appeals process is demonstrating a hardship, a reason why the drive must be put in. And that reason really has to be informed by data. So that is what we are proposing. That was what, is what we would reckon moving forward. And if you have questions specifically about the zoning, I'd be happy to answer those in more detail.
Thank you. Um, so I think also, um, Commission Member Flucker had his name or his hand up prior, so we'll take some comments or questions from him.
Thanks, man. I, I appreciate your thorough and thoughtful explanation. I think there's a bigger issue here. And I, I think as, as we move through, um, what I believe to be an influx of lots of denser developments, we need to figure out what the process is in this, in City Hall. Because we should not be here having this conversation. And many communities around this state, Metro being one of them, before you even get a design review, there's a very extensive site plan, detailed site plan and traffic studies that have to be conducted and approved prior to, uh, talking about, you know, what we're, where we are now, right? Trying to prove a project and having some issues. That's, that's just my opinion. I think we need to really, we need to look at our process. The second thing is, has a lot to do with, um, EV, uh, electric vehicles. Um, I, I know that, you know, the applicant proposes to put a couple of stations in, but I, what I would advocate for all denser developments is that the infrastructure go in to accommodate more. Because if, if you're not listening to what's going on in terms of research of sodium batteries, um, what the, the big three is going to do in, in, in their future, develop more infrastructure so they can sell more EV cars, it's coming. So we, to try and be, um, retrofit things and, and be, um, sort of responding to that demand, I think it would go a long way to put a couple conduit in and, and make sure the infrastructure is there to accommodate what's inevitable. Thank you.
Madam, Madam Chair, just kind of, uh, you know, absorbing, absorbing Mr. Moss's comments. And, uh, I understand, you know, when, when you go to the Board of Zoning Appeals, you are supposed to demonstrate a hardship. I guess I think that keeping cars away from a public park and, and moving cars towards where they're going to end up, which is moving towards Lorraine Avenue and then to the bridge, uh, ju- just feels a little self-evident. And, and I guess, you know, sometimes I, this is, uh, we'll try not to go into soapbox, but I just sometimes worry that traffic studies, like the, the traffic engineering as a field is about moving traffic. And when we start talking about pedestrian safety, it's almost like you don't, you want traffic to be slowed. You want there to be some degree of congestion. That makes it safer. So I feel like we're constantly battling these two philosophies and, and, but, you know, exiting out onto West 20th and determining if it's safer for pedestrians. It's safer than the block immediately north of this, which is just a traditional curb cut, curb cut, curb cut, curb cut. And, and really, you know, instead of designing the city so that we have straight blocks where people can just feel free to go 80 miles an hour, you know, like it, I, it, it seems safer to have cars coming in and then sightlines and just designing the environment to force people to slow down. That doesn't mean forced down to a, a crawl and a stop and, and a traffic jam. But, you know, the, the, the speed limit on 19th is 25 miles an hour. That's a ridiculous speed, you know? And I just, I, I know that that's, that's a big thing we can't solve today, but I, I, long story short, I feel like we're just over complicating, uh, what seems like is, is a logical thing that could go to BZA. And I, I just, I know the councilman is fine with this going forward, uh, you know, and just within any motion voicing our support, uh, for this variance. So that when it comes to BZA, hopefully it would be seamless. Obviously, we can predict that. Thanks.
Thank you. Um, I have a question, but anybody else who'd like to speak or ask a question? Before I ask it, um, I'm going to ask this, oh, go ahead. Who wants it?
I was just gonna say, Madam Chair, we have the, the applicants all have their hand raised.
Okay. Well, I'll ask my question because it's going to the applicant, actually. So to the applicant, um, can you, would you state on the record, because you are on the record, what your intentions are in terms of coming back and going to BZA to add this in the future?
Michael, you want me to answer that?
Can everybody hear me? I'm sorry. I had an issue with my headset. Okay. Yeah, I, no, Madam Chair, I can answer that question. We have been, uh, very responsive to this issue and we remain committed to the most optimal solution to both vehicular ingress egress as well as pedestrian safety. We've been responsive to the zoning for this site as set forth, um, in the urban plan overlay. At the same time, we remain committed to working with the neighborhood and the councilmen as we already have and provision for this as opposed to including this, um, you know, space within the program for our site. And so, you know, we remain as cooperative as possible in exploring this solution. And if it's a requirement to go to Board of Zoning in conjunction with the neighborhood or the neighborhood, I guess, you know, being granted our, our proxy, I suppose, to go through this process, that's a commitment we're willing to make, um, in cooperation with exploring this with the city. It's, you know, very clear this is a greater philosophical discussion, um, just based upon what was spoken on here. But we're committed to working with all parties on this, on this issue and we provisioned for it. But as, you know, Brandon had said, we would request, um, you know, for the approvals of this pro- project to move forward independent of that while we explore this and have these greater discussions.
And, and if I can add to that, uh, I mean, this, this project is a 20-month construction project. I mean, so the, the, the process to do this the right way and have all the data information, I mean, Matt Moss, uh, that's a significant amount of detailed calculations and, and aspects that, you know, need to be considered, just, you know, sightline studies, we've, we've tried to make as much, you know, ability. We pulled the stairwells back. We, you know, shifted the townhouse buildings, uh, as far back as we can per the zoning code to allow for, again, the relief so that when a vehicular is exiting, potentially in this provision, that they have as much reactions on before they get to a pedestrian and for those scenarios and then to the street. So we're trying to do this as appropriately as possible, but we're basically just pleading with everybody on this aspect that this is one aspect, a small aspect of a large development project. And, you know, we have an extended, long construction process. It would be, you know, hard for us to be held up for a BZA hearing on this for a global project when we provisioned for this. And, you know, we're committed to work through it, just like we've worked through with the residents in the, in the neighborhood from the state. We've taken almost every single comment from them, other than parking, into consideration and have, have worked with them and are still committed to it. You know, as we stated, this isn't like a build it and walk away scenario. I mean, we're, we're going to be, you know, vested in this neighborhood as, you know, Michael's developer, um, and in this project. So, you know, we're not turning it back on the neighbors.
Yeah, I do hear you and I, I actually appreciate that because you, it's not like you're an out of town developer that we're not going to see again. So we will see you again, both of you, actually. But I think the question I was asking, and I think I heard the answer, is that you will start that process and go through that process independent of this. And you're saying that on the record, right?
That's correct.
Yes.
Okay. And I, and I use the word independent because the reason you're asking for them as independent process is that otherwise you cannot move forward with the development unless they're parallel, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So to the commission members, any other comments or discussion? Or you wanted to say some other things, um, to the applicants other than my question? So was there anything else you wanted to add?
Madam Chair, Elaine Borowski also raised her hand again. Sorry.
Yeah, and I'm sorry, I'll make this very quick. I just want to confirm I'm understanding this too. We, we, I do believe the Block Club would support moving forward. But in, again, in, in deep respect, we had this almost same conversation with you all with the Stone Lay, now Waterford Bluffs process, which you all made a recommendation on how something would move forward. It did not move forward that way. And so there's not a lot of trust here that on the city side, that this is going to actually move in a direction or that we will continue to be kept in the loop on this. So I'm just, want this on record that this will be, this is just the second time this is happening to our neighborhood and we would like just to make sure. But again, from the development standpoint, just like we said with the Stone Lay process, we didn't want them to stop. We don't want these guys to be delayed, but we want the city to please listen to us. Thank you. And I would point out, was that a previous administration? Well, yes, of course. Okay. So I'm just pointing that out. So for this new administration, I think there's a collaboration here, but, um, but thank you. It's, it's understood and, and I understand what you're saying. So, um, just to finish, August has his hand raised, but I, did the applicants have anything else they wanted to state other than my question?
Madam Chair, uh, before, before I, we move on to Councilmember Flucker, there's also Jason Petroff and Matt Moss. So after the applicants respond, I would like to make sure that Jason.
Sure.
Is able to speak.
No, I would, I would just say in response that, no additional comments other than Elaine, um, to you. We, you know, we have our commitment here, you know, publicly, as we've said, you know, in public meetings to continue to work on this issue. So I just want to make sure that was on record, but no other comments for the commission. Thank you.
Okay. Um, August, how about, it'll take August first and then we'll, we'll take everybody's comments. So don't worry. Um, August, go ahead.
Oh, yeah, I had not heard a response from the applicant concerning providing what I would believe inexpensive infrastructure pathways to ensure additional stations could be in, uh, EV station could be installed. Thank you.
Sure. I can speak to that. No, no, we, I, I don't disagree with that statement at all. We provisioned here for, I believe, two, but we're happy to explore the, uh, additional conduit to provide more. I don't disagree with where the trend is going with electric vehicles and I'm fully supportive of that. So, um, I, I don't have a specific answer for you right now, but I, we're more than happy to look at, what additional provisions can be made for that.
And if I can add to that, Michael, um, uh, August, that we, we, when we provide just two, we typically provide one large, uh, you know, eight inch conduit, um, you know, from the electrical room adjacent to that. Because usually, once you get two, you don't end up with just two, you end up with multiple more. So that we have the pathway into the building from there. But, uh, you know, obviously, location of those and other aspects, there will be some in-ground work that will happen when we do that. But at least it'll be built into the building.
I, I just come from being an EV owner. It's very discouraging that I can't pull up and, and charge my car. I have to look and, and, and actually sometimes trespass to, to charge my car. So thank you. I appreciate your consideration.
Okay. Um, also.
Madam Chair, we, we did have Matt Moss and we also have Jason Petroff raised his hand again. And then, of course, Director Wong also raised her hand.
Okay. Well, we'll save, uh, the director for the last word. So Matt, we'll go first to you.
Uh, Madam Chair, it's not exactly related to this project, but because it was brought up, I wanted to speak to it briefly, about the Waterford Bluffs, Bluffs project that we'd previously reviewed. Uh, there was a request there to make a modification to West 20th Street and that involved adjusting some curb lines in order for us to stripe an additional lane. And we had some initial conversations very early when that project was approved by the planning commission. And I understand the frustration in terms of communication and timeline. It feels like nothing has been done. But we are making progress on that and have received updates from the developer. We try to make sure that when we get information on these types of things, they quickly get complicated in terms of utilities and other details that we want to work out. So when we communicate information, updates to the public, that it's as accurate and realistic as possible. So I understand the frustration, but we are still working on it. I just spoke to the Commissioner, Commissioner Mavick this morning too, who is actively talking to the councilman on those updates. So it is always an ongoing situation, but I just wanted to share that information.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate it. Appreciate all that you do, um, Matt. So, um, Jason?
Uh, yes, uh, thank you, Madam Chair. And I, I had raised my hand, but I, I do want to just, um, you know, make one, uh, statement here. Um, I know that I have said this before the commission, uh, previously, but, um, and I appreciate, uh, Mr. Slife, your comments. But I also think that this is, um, evidence of the, some of the unintended consequences of the urban form overlay. You know, there is history and precedent in Duck Island with other projects where there have been matters of egress that have been resolved with, um, you know, modifications to projects. Additional egresses added, um, at the request of, uh, the councilman. Um, and so, you know, I would just again ask that, um, you know, we continue as a community to look at, um, the urban form overlay as, as it exists currently. Um, and so I thank, um, the, uh, the, the commission for, for hearing me, uh, this morning and for all of the comments on this project.
Okay. Thank you. Um, I think, um, we are going to hear last from, um, the director. And then we will ask commission members to make a motion.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, and, uh, this is both to the commission and to Ms. Borowski. Again, I, this is a new administration and we are in, very interested in practicing what we promise. And, uh, as you've heard from Matt already, he does a very thorough job with his district planning analyses. And so this is a promise from me that however the commission decides, whether it's today to allow for the egress or to conduct a further study, that if we do do the further study, that we will continuously communicate and, and keep you updated on how that is, um, how that is going. So that's, that's a word from me. And I did hear the concern around the process. And, uh, city planner Matt and I will discuss where the traffic engineering studies, when and where they happen. So I've heard your concerns around that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. And by, and also by who they will be conducted by? Okay. Thank you. Okay. Uh, commission members?
Madam Chair, I will, I will move approval and noting this commission's support for the granting of a variance, uh, for egress onto West 20th. That is, that's the motion. And I guess the commentary on the motion is that, uh, I, although I can't speak for Councilman McCormick, although maybe I should try, people confuse us. If, if the issue is that a urban form overlay was legislated and that is spurring the need for a variance for this egress, perhaps this urban form overlay, if, if the project has achieved the intent of the urban form overlay but for this thing, uh, maybe that is a legislative fix as, as a backup option.
Okay. Sort of a motion? Do we have a second?
Second. Luca.
Uh, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All I would like to add is to Elaine and to the Block Club and to the residents. I just want to thank you and appreciate your comments and also your skepticism and your fighting for the community. It is really understood and appreciated. And, um, and I, as the chair of the commission, the new chair, also have added this to a list of something that I will follow up on and ask for an update on as well. And so I just wanted to say that to you, but I, we really do appreciate this because what you said is true. This is a much better project on many levels and especially the retail that you fought for and other things. And so this is a case where actually, um, from my perspective, the community process and the design review process resulted in a much better project. Sometimes it actually does not. So I thank you and I thank the community for, um, staying on top of this with your volunteer time. So thank you. With that, um, we'll ask for the roll.
Downing.
Yes.
Luca.
Yes.
Curry.
Yes.
McCray Scott.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Motion carries. So really, thank you all very, very much. Um, and it's hard to believe this is the la- was the last item. So, um, since this is the first meeting of the chair, I asked that if she wants any concluding comments. And we don't have a director's report. Sometimes we do. So, um, just maybe Joyce, ask if you want to say anything about what's on the horizon for you or, or anything that you'd like to, to say we should sort of think about going forward.
Absolutely. I'm just so excited to be in this seat and have been coordinating with staff already to encourage this process to be much more transparent and, uh, expedient, um, for all those involved, whether it's, um, uh, folks that are wanting to see, see these projects move forward, whether it's for neighborhood developers or neighborhood-based developers who may not have as many resources and need assistance. You know, we are here to provide that service and, um, and move things forward for our city to make it greater. And just in terms of process, it's been my first week. You know, it's been amazing working with the staff members. And again, also with this new cluster called Integrated Development, to really consider what does it mean to see all four of our departments, whether that's planning, building and housing, economic development, community development, really come in concert with one another as we think about our development plant patterns and our planning patterns, uh, to really make sure that it's cohesive, that we're, you know, we have a vision and we have principles around how we want our land use to develop. What does equitable, equitable development look like? And how can we all work together to make sure that we are developing in a sustainable way in the city? So that's a lot of cross coordination that is beginning to happen. And, uh, I look forward to reporting out more to this commission and to the public around how we are starting to formulate those principles and plans. Thanks.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Flucker, I see your hand up.
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you. Um, I, I would like to also maybe recommend or advocate for how we hear projects. For example, Ms. Maranucci, she's been before, she had been before us three times. And I was very familiar with the project. And, and I think the operative word in our commission is planning. I don't know if we need to, to listen to all the details of, of a, design details of a project and maybe get to the, the details of, you know, context and, and, you know, parking or traffic and things like that, if it's been thoroughly vetted by our, our, our colleagues who do a lot of work to, to get to where we are. Just, just a thought. Thank you.
I agree, actually. So, um, I will do a, a better job of sort of, if we've seen something a couple of times, maybe we'll truly ask that also the applicants really only focus on what has changed and not go through the projects again. And, um, and I, you have my commitment that we're going to end these meetings on time as well because your time is valuable and we need a quorum as well. So I agree with you, August. So I agree with you, August, and I'll work with the, the team and Joyce to make sure that we do do that. And we should trust our, our local design review commissions, which are excellent, and go through in great detail and do the interiors, and that's their job, not ours. So I totally agree with you. So thank you. With that, I think this meeting is adjourned, and thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.